Recording in progress.
Lake Hill Bridge, I tried to get a hold of them and they didn't. I'm trying to find out what the schedule is, the new schedule. They were supposed to have started this year. I don't, I don't know. It definitely isn't starting this year because they would have had construction stuff down there by now. So when we get notice of a storm coming in, snowstorm, we'll get the crews and walk off the bridge. Like last year. Okay. What do we do about, um...
Criminal background check.
Background check and... Is that it?
You can go on to the... It's the main criminal justice. It's what we use in the best, it's free service. You can do it, um... Do we have a... Does anybody have the sign on it?
I think you have to have an account. I know I tried to look at through the school and they have to have an account and the schools everything uses their account. But anyway, Lori definitely has that. She just can't find her paperwork. You can't teach without that criminal background piece and it's right on your certification. So I was thinking maybe the DOE would have a copy of her certification that maybe we could get from there. Um, so, I mean, I'm not... I know it's in her contract that it says that she's supposed to have it.
The thing is, the way it's written in the contract too, it doesn't say previously. It says must submit and pass. So that's... I think we need to do nothing with the contract actually.
You can pay MMA to do it. It would be approximately $65 to have MMA do a background check. I will tell you that it takes... It's very thorough. We don't do it very often unless we have somebody who's dealing with money or children on that higher level. It takes sometimes up to three weeks, but they go out of state, they do every county, they do a credit check, they do the whole shebang for about 65 bucks. And I can email you that MMA information, it's philanthropically... She does it for us.
Do we have to do it for all the volunteers?
No. We've got a little form for the volunteers that they just check out and it says we may, um, need to do that if they said yes to anything that we thought was unflagged. But no. Did you get the names of the volunteers that I sent you? Okay. My feeling is, I'm not really, I'm not worried about it at all. I know it's a technicality that we're supposed to have to pay for. I'm not sure that we need to go through that whole thing that Nina was talking about if we could get a copy of it from, um, the DOE because, I mean, I'm not sure how current it would be, but I don't know when she actually retired.
That's a question I have. So if you're going to hire a new teacher in a school, do they have to do a new background check each time they move to a new place?
Not if they got their cert, was their certification.
So we would be the same?
Actually, we should.
Well, if I was certified, if I was on our camp, we had to. But if I had a five-year teacher certification and I was moving to a different school, I would not have to go through the background check because it's already on my certification that I have it. And I only ever did it once in my 30-year career, so...
Everybody does it different.
My, my concern wasn't whether we had it or not. It's just that if you don't make her do one currently, then we need to do an updated contract. Because we're not following the contract.
And just remove that from the contract, is that what you're saying?
Or reword it somehow? Leave it on the contract or whatever? That's kind of up to these guys and what, what was arranged with the school. Did the school mention anything about it? Because they have some liability there. So, but my concern was just that right now we actually don't have a valid contract, so...
It seems to me there are three issues. The one is whether or not we would ask her to give a new one, which is the version you're talking about. The second is whether or not an existing certification is enough and if she can find it. The third is what we do in the short term on the contract. So we'd have to do both of those at the same time. We'd have to say, it seems to me if we're going to revise the contract, we'd have to say something like, uh, temporary basis, it's fine, but, but within...
Within three months.
Six weeks or something. Two months. Does that sound like you, Captain?
An all-new hire should have a new background check, doesn't matter what their, the, what their certification is. They should have a background check. Just like if somebody goes from one position to another position, they get a background check because who knows if they did something in between that time to do something else.
That's what I was going to say. That's true.
I guess they're assuming that you didn't do it once, you're not going to do it twice. But that's why when I first read it, that's why I thought maybe that we did it because I knew Lori had been a teacher. But, um, that's why it looks like this is a new background check being required. So my only thing is to make it straight in the contract.
Right, right. Because that'll be, that's an issue. It is an issue.
Well, that's up to you, Mr. Sinek, what you want to do.
I would be in favor of the two-month release period to get this done. Do you think three more?
Unfortunately, yeah.
Ninety days.
Ninety days? Don't you think so? We do it in ninety days? If we can do it in ninety days, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I could look into the one that they used through the DOE. I don't think it's that long. It might, oh, I shouldn't say that, it's the DOE. But, um...
The other one is just, the other one is like 24 hours. The other one is just through the main criminal.
Oh, it's like $50.
No, 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 this is through the main criminal justice through...
I remember the same one.
But, um, but again, I, I mean, I can't do it for you with the sign on that I currently have. But I'm wondering what a process is just to get us in there because we should be doing background checks on all new hires anyway. And I hope that one was done on me.
Yeah, so how do I do that?
Um, I can start that process for you if you'd like. I mean, and it might not, it might be something that I could have done in a couple of days.
Yeah, why don't we try that?
Because that's free and you can do as many as you want. You just got to keep track of what you do.
Yeah, that's, I think that would be...
Yeah, and it does all of Maine, so you're good to go. Yeah.
So we give a 90-day grace period and we'll work on, on that in the meantime. So I'll make a motion that we, uh, delay the, um, background check for 90 days and we will work on, um, getting a background check.
So I'm going to write on the contract that you deferred that for 90 days and refer to this meeting.
Yeah.
Write on our contract.
Yeah, see that statement? Yeah.
Second, move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, guys. You know, we need to be sorry. We cover all our bases, that's still high going, uh...
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Lake Hill Bridge, I tried to get ahold of them and I didn't. I'm trying to find out what the schedule is, the new schedule. They were supposed to have started this year. I don't, I don't know. It definitely aren't starting this year because they would have had construction stuff down there by now. So when we get notice of a storm coming in, snowstorm, we'll get the crews and walk off the bridge. Like last year. What do we do about?
Criminal background check.
Background check and. Is that just background check?
You can go on to the, it's the main criminal justice, it's what we use in the guest, it's free service. You can do it. Do we have a, does anybody have the sign on?
I think you have to have an account. I know I tried to look at through the school and they have, you have to have an account and the schools everything use their account, but anyway. Lori definitely has that. She just can't find her paperwork. You can't, you can't teach without that criminal background piece and it's right on your certification. So I was thinking maybe the DOE would have a copy of her certification that maybe we could get from there. So, I mean, I'm not, I know it's in her contract that it says that she's supposed to have it.
The, the thing is, the way it's written in the contract too, it doesn't say previously, it says must submit and pass. So that's, I think we need to do an updated contract actually.
Um, you can pay MMA to do it. It would be approximately sixty-five dollars to have the MMA do a background check. I will tell you that it takes. It, it, it's a very thorough, we don't do it very often unless we have somebody who's dealing with money or children on that higher level. Um, it takes sometimes up to three weeks, but they go out of state, they do every county, they do a credit check, they do the whole shebang for about sixty-five bucks. And I can email you that MMA information until then to widely. She does it for us.
Do we have to do it for all the volunteers?
No.
Okay.
We've got a little form for the volunteers that they just check out and it says we may need to do that if they said yes to anything that we thought was, it went flagged, but no. Did you get the names of the volunteers that I sent you? Okay. But my feeling is, I'm not really, I'm not worried about it at all. I know it's a technicality that we're supposed to have to pay for. I'm not sure that we need to go through that whole thing that Nina was talking about if we could get a copy of it from, um, the DOE because, I mean, I'm not sure how current it would be, but I, I, I don't know how, I don't know when she actually retired.
That's a question I have. So if you're going to hire a new teacher in a school, do they have to do a new background check each time they move to a new place?
Not if they've got their cert, what's their certification?
So we, we would be the same.
Actually, we should.
We.
Well, if I was certified, if I, because on our camp, we had to. But if I had a five-year teacher certification and I was moving to a different school, I would not have to go through the background check. Because it's already on my certification that I have it. And I, I only ever did it once in my thirty-year career, so.
Everybody does it different.
My, my concern wasn't whether we had it or not. It's just that if you don't make her do one currently, then we need to do an updated contract. Because we're not following the contract.
And just remove that from the contract, is that what you're saying?
Or reword it somehow? Leave it on the contract or, or whatever, that's kind of up to these guys and what, what was arranged with the school. Does the school mention anything about it? Because they have some liability there. So, but my concern was just that right now we actually don't have a valid contract, so.
It seems to me there are three issues. The one is whether or not we would ask her to give a new one, which is the version you're talking about.
Right.
Second is whether or not an existing certification is enough and if she can find it. And the third is what we do in the short term on the contract. So we'd have to do both of those at the same time. We'd have to say, it seems to me if we're going to revise the contract, we'd have to say something like, uh, temporary basis, it's fine, but, but within.
Within three months.
Six weeks or something.
One on one.
Two months. Does that sound like you, Captain?
And all new hires should have a new background check, doesn't matter what their, the, what their certification is. They should have a background. And just like if somebody goes from one position to another position, they get a background check because who knows if they did something in between that time to do something else.
I guess they're assuming that you didn't do it once, you're not going to do it.
But that, that's why when I first read it, that's why I thought maybe that we did it because I knew Lori had been a teacher, but, um, that's why it looks like this is a new background check being required. So my only thing is to make it straighten the contract.
Right, right, right. Because that'll be, that's an issue, it is an issue.
Well, that's up to you, Mr. Sinek, what you want to do.
I would be in favor of the two-month release period to get this done. You think three more?
Unfortunately, yeah.
Ninety days.
Ninety days? What do you think about?
We do it in ninety days? If we can do it in ninety days, I, I don't have any problem with that.
Yeah, I could look into the one that they used through the DOE. I don't think it's that long. It might, well, I shouldn't say that, it's a DOE, but, um.
Well, it's only three weeks.
The other one is just, the other one is like twenty-four hours. The other one is just.
Oh, it's fifty-five dollars.
No, 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 this is through the main criminal justice through.
I remember the same one.
But, um, but again, I, I mean, I can't do it for you with the sign on that I currently have, but I'm wondering what a process is just to get us in there because we should be doing background checks on all new hires anyway, and I hope that one was done on me.
Yeah, so how do I do that?
Um, I can start that process for you if you'd like. I mean, and it might not, it might be something that I could have done in a couple of days.
Yeah, why don't we try that?
Because that's free and you can do as many as you want, you just got to keep track of what you do.
Yeah, that's, I think that would be.
Yeah, and it does all of Maine, so you're good to go, yeah.
So we give a ninety-day grace period and we'll work on, on that in the meantime. So I'll make a motion that we, uh, delay the, um, background check for ninety days and we will work on, um, getting a background check.
So I'm going to write on the contract that you deferred that for ninety days and refer to this meeting.
Yeah.
Write on our contract, so we have it in file.
Yeah, see that statement? Yeah.
Good.
Today, yeah.
Second.
Boom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all it is. You know, we need to be sorry, we cover all our bases, that's.
It's still high going, yeah.
Okay, next meeting, uh, we're going to put down for a public hearing. Uh, we need to adopt the new GA ordinance. This is done every year. Um, they change some of the, um, factors that we need to go through. It's not a big deal, but we need to do it. See, oh, uh, we've been advertising the CEO for over a month and we have received nothing. So I have at least one person in the works. So, um, maybe we should add us and do that like the next Saturday that we have open up when Kyle comes in.
Yeah, when we do the workshops, we can have a little meeting before that. Maybe do a.
Is Alice Oshisina?
What's that?
The RFP for the, uh, CEO?
Yeah. Oh, no. I didn't even send that to him.
Send it to him.
That's me to reply.
Um. Okay.
Uh, this last one, sticking with the CEO.
Um. Yes.
We have a draft deadline with Bill, um, when, when is he doing it?
No. Um. I probably should talk with him because he did mention November.
Yeah, I'll let it up.
Um, so, yeah, we should, we should mention it, oh, he should mention it to him that we are really looking at a new person. When we interview that person, we should give him a copy of the ordinances so he could start getting used to them. And be able to give him a time when he could take over. So we really, you know.
I guess I don't understand if, is it like, I will stay until November if you don't find someone? So if we find someone earlier, that's good, right, that'll do the job. He will be earlier than that.
Right.
Okay.
Doc, I'm also assuming that this guy wants to take it. We better have that interview with him first, yeah.
Okay, I showed, um, Bill's, uh, last day is going to be Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four. That's his tentative notice and then he can stay on to limited capacity until March of twenty-twenty-five.
November twenty-four?
Yeah, November twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four is his last day.
Okay. Um. I will try to have, uh, Rob DePlessis, our assessor, um, at least zoom in next meeting, uh, to talk about the assessing and possible.
I just wanted to know that a guest that is only at sixty-eight percent valuation.
They're at sixty-eight? You're not supposed to drop below eighty, we're at eighty-two. Ouch.
Still working on that.
Um. Okay, um, the fire department, uh, was inspected by Lynn Martin, who is our safety consultant. She does, uh, she keeps us, um, so that we meet all Department of Labor rules. Um, make sure we have fire, uh, fire hydrants and all this stuff, all the safety thing. She, um, went through and why she picked up on this, but, um, we had weight limits on the upper floors of the fire department and the rescue station. So we needed to get them, um, and here again, the same engineer came in, um, and he put, five pounds per square foot on the fire station above the chief's office. That's basically a.
Laptop.
Yeah, basically a laptop. Now there's a ton of file cabinets there and a whole bunch of other stuff. So he's going to have to look at cleaning that stuff out.
Upstairs?
Yeah.
That's just basically.
It's in the storage area. So basically.
How big is the area?
You just got to get rid of it. It's, um,
Doesn't matter, it's not.
Uh, seven feet by probably twenty?
So.
It doesn't work out that way.
Hundred and thirty square feet times five?
Yeah, it doesn't work that way. I thought so too. I can't do it that way.
It's not that much. Only nine hundred pounds, right?
Right. But above the, um, rescue station, it's fifteen pounds per square foot. There's not much up there, uh, so I think he can clean that out, it would be not, not too far off. But he just has to do some clean outs. And I said, I told him that if he did it when the fire, when the transfer station's not open, I can be available and make sure he can get everything in with the, you know, some of it's metal, some of it's recycling, so he just has to clean out. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that this was in the works anyway. And the Zoom account, how do we address that? Tina, do you know?
We've got to find a place to put those Zoom recordings between them. I've been saving them on the laptop that I've been using, so not to use, not to do Zoom, but I've got to have a permanent place for those. We either need a server that I can download them all to or a, a thumb drive that has a major, major capacity of a terabyte or something.
The, I just got external hard drives that are like five terabytes.
Yeah.
And they were.
I mean, it's, that would last forever, um, but those have to be, those have to be saved, we cannot delete those.
Should I talk with Scott?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to save those. And like I said, I've been doing my best, but that laptop's going to come up memory low here pretty soon too, so.
Oh, yeah, the other thing was, um, the monitor in Heather's office, like she's got those two monitors and somehow they picked over in one room. Scott's saying. Speak. He's looking at a new one. He says he'll take it off on his working. On, um, computer time.
They shouldn't have to do that.
I know, but he, he felt bad. Um.
I think it was only one thirty-something.
One thirty-seven. Um. The other thing I want people to know is he, um, we did a really good job in the transfer station cleaning out, I don't know if you noticed. We went down, uh, and cleaned out the brush pile.
Yeah.
Striped it out real nice where the tires are and there's also a gully where the, um, culprit is. No one even knew where the culprit was, um, but that's all cleaned out where George had his bike, that old shack is gone. Now we're trying to think of how we can keep it that way. Um, there's got to be a way to make it so that Megan either has to be able to stop cars from going, trucks going into where the, the brush pile is so that she can see what's actually going in there. Like, uh, Luis, our, uh, truck, while he was cleaning up, a truck brought in a bunch of junk. Um, baby's bassinet or something like that. It was not, it was not brush.
Yeah, yeah.
Dumped it right there and took off.
Yeah. Well, we.
You know, stumps.
Yeah, just, I'm not myself, he just cruised through, we don't pause or anything, it seems to me maybe.
Lots of gun, there's no way Megan can run off, we down there and catch them.
No, how about a sign saying that, you know, before dumping charges will be attended?
I'm going to run it through the transfer station committee.
Needs to be checked. Okay.
And I put that on the, that top of their list.
Yeah.
How can we improve that?
I hear that, I, I thought Megan was unfortunately leaving.
She's delaying, she doesn't really want to.
Okay, fair.
Yeah. But, yeah, we got to stop, uh, propane tanks from coming in. Yeah, I took twenty-something into Chelsea the other day.
I will put another, uh, thing in the newsletter about making sure if you write recycle on your propane tank, you can drop it off at Lowe's or Home Depot or any of the Blue Rhino places. Just write on there, recycle, boom, drop them and they take them.
Fire, fire doesn't take them anymore?
No. Um, no stops, no, uh, propane tanks, uh, more oil. Yeah.
That's your household.
There's oil in it, and that's, that is a swing. You don't have to be taking that stuff.
Set up for by Georges?
Yeah. Somehow we got to straighten that out. One more thing. Um. This grant available through MMA Risk Management, three thousand dollars. Um, I'd like to go for ADA on the two doors.
Yeah.
I, I think O N P Glass is the one that actually installed Manchester's, their front door. I mean, O N P, I thought and thought and thought about that when I watched that in the, in the meeting and it was like, who installed that in Manchester? And theirs is out on a, on a, on a post.
Yeah.
And I think it was O N P Glass.
I didn't even think about that, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's who installed it for us.
Yeah. Oh, good, good, good. Yeah, okay. Yeah, they would, they would.
Because they installed the door, I think it's the whole door thing that, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I will call them. But, yeah, that's three thousand dollars right now.
That'd be great.
Okay, I will put that up. It's got to be in before the fifteenth, but that's all I have for questions.
Easy peasy, yeah.
Yeah. That's it for me.
I just have one question for public comments. What, just out of curiosity, just because I'm personally curious, what is the status of the new restaurant in the old general store? Does anybody know? What?
It was supposed to be ready this fall, I doubt it very much. It'd be this fall.
It's just all written so nice, standing there, oh, it's really quite something. That's why I was slightly thinking something, so we just don't really know.
But it's nice that they did the old, uh, the skates and then the new restaurant and now the Grismill, it's.
Just one that's building across from states and container, it's really.
Yeah, the big thing is going to be, uh, Bowie Jefferson's supposed to do the insulation, the loan in.
Yeah.
Um.
On the restaurant?
Yeah, if you see that being done, then you know that they're pushing.
Yep.
But to like do that.
Yeah, because I went by one last week or the week before and it looked like there was still framing.
Yeah.
Brush framing.
Public comments.
I just want to let you know that the governance committee is meeting tomorrow night. And we are going to try to summarize, we are going to summarize all the information that we got so that we can have a report ready to share with you. So I would love to have a date so that we're going to come to this particular meeting and it's going to be done because otherwise I think we'll just keep. Well, maybe someday. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. True.
Good.
So you have a di, you have a date?
Tomorrow night?
We're meeting tomorrow night, yes.
You can come to the next meeting if you want.
It's Wednesday, twenty-third.
I was just going to say, that sounds a little busy.
It's busy.
How about, how about one month, is that too late?
No.
October seventh or the twenty-first?
I'll be here the twenty-first, so.
October seventh?
Yeah, October seventh and the twenty-first, one of these ones.
It's seven?
Ready to seven?
And I was actually thinking, Dan, that we could use all the information, we could use AI to put our report together. But I don't know how to do it, so it's going to have to do that.
Yeah, easy peasy.
For someone that knows how to do it, but anyway.
Yeah.
So that might be mine, we've got a ton of information that we're trying to.
Well, what you can do just FYI is put it in, see how it summarizes it and then just carefully read. All right, decide they got this right, this should be moved up. It can be a handy tool. It's just ChatGPT, just download ChatGPT.
Chat, yeah.
Uh, just put in, in the Google, uh, search bar, put ChatGPT.
G P T.
Yeah, and they'll give you an older version, but don't worry about that, you don't need the new one because new one's only, the only difference is the new one is up to date on searches and stuff. Like you can get stuff that's two weeks old, this might be, we're not doing that.
You don't have data that.
And then just.
Enter.
And then in the spacebar, it's just, it looks like a little box, but you can put five hundred pages in it, you can put whatever you want, just cut and paste it, I always say please.
Okay.
Please, you know, condense this, so please create a report from the following column and just put it in there. Hit that, do it, and magic happens.
I may be forced to try it.
You'll see, now, again, some of it, because like, you know, students and I are talking about it all the time, some of it is junky, but a lot of it's not. You just have to be, you can never just take it for what it is.
Right, absolutely.
But once it's done and you start reading through, you're like, holy, Charlie, God, right, you're like, got it all, you'll see.
It does it for you?
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
That's AI. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
College students are having a right therapist.
Transforming my job.
Jesus, yeah, it must be tough on you.
It's hard to know what to do, on the one hand, the act of writing is really important and it's, there's a cognitive piece to it, a brain development piece to it. But on the other hand, there's a tool that can do it almost instantaneously and it's sitting there and that's where the world's from.
Yeah.
So what do you do?
Yeah.
That's really hard.
We used to use slide rules.
Yeah.
Right?
That's right.
And I still go use, no?
But the idea is, you still need the, the, the basis behind the slide rule.
Yeah.
And that's the trick for any of this, I think, is to make sure that not, okay, so I can write my paper using AI, I can do this using AI. But at some point you have to figure people still know how to do that so that we can continue with AI. But at this point, AI isn't teaching itself. So I can have a computer play the piano, but you still have to pay, have somebody that knows how to play the piano in order to do the program, so. And you still want.
Okay.
So anyway, we're, we're.
That's good. Interesting here, so maybe by, maybe by, this would be something we would have to present to the town in June.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if that's what you decided that you want to go forward, but it has, and it has all these stipulations and number of days and.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know.
It'll take, yeah, it'll take forever, it'll take a couple of years.
Right.
To do it. We would have to change to a, a five-member board. And there's, there's a lot to it, yeah.
There's a lot to it.
Yeah.
But it's going to be worth it, it will be worth it, I'm telling you, it really will.
Yeah, it'll take a lot of pressure off of us.
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
Curiosity question, one's a god.
Yes.
I can ask.
We don't have many phone calls.
They're going to grind it.
They're going to.
They're trying to learn myself what they're going to do.
Yeah.
They're going to grind the tire out.
Yeah.
Now, once they grind it out, that machine spits it out the back.
Yeah.
And just spreads it, are they going to re-gravel before they?
Re-gravel.
They're going to put some ice, they'll gravel down.
Yeah. Yeah, and then grade it.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I know they're going to. Think they roll it, but I'm not sure.
I just want them to lay the old stuff out back, that wasn't much, they were going to flatten.
Right. No, and they, then, yeah, I think they roll it too, but I'm not sure.
Is there like?
But we're waiting for that gr, that grinder to come in, that's that's key.
Yeah.
And then hopefully paving. Well, the big thing is the grinder, once this grinder comes in, at least it'll be smooth then. We won't have all those.
Where does that tire go? I mean, if they're going to put gravel down, but the tires made out behind, you know, part of the tire.
Yeah, they repurpose it.
Yeah. So that's what they're going to grade, instead of gravel?
Yeah. Yeah.
I was wondering what Refill did on like the transfer, but see that they added some, they added gravel and then new pavement.
Yeah. Yeah. So when we get that program, um, we're going to need to sit down and do the inputting and start building, um, the roads back up so that we can get a good. and start building, um, the roads back up so that we can get a good idea of what condition the roads are in. So we're gonna have to start digging back into, um, that road program again. But I gotta get it first.
Just letting you know.
You are my committee.
I can start keying that discussion.
You are my committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
So, does, does Lee oversee that?
Yeah.
Or do they just have a contractor on it?
Oh, for that? Uh, no, we would. Yeah. Yeah, because they're doing, they're not re-grinding on the bean road, but they're gonna pave that. They'll pave Dunce Corner Road and then they're gonna pave, uh, on the Wings Mill Road, they put in a culvert, uh, Scotland did, and they're gonna pave that little section too.
Where do they have that road from?
That is a Wings Mill.
That goes into Twente Road, so you're, it's not the Wings Mill. It's the one that comes off of the North Road that connects with the Wings Mill, the Rat Mill.
I don't know that way.
What's that road? The trailer path, the mobile home path is on there.
That's nice.
On the other side of Dunce Corner. Is it Dunce Corner?
Oh, uh, on the other side of Wings Mill, you mean?
Right, it's the other one, but it's the one where if you're coming up off that North Road and then you make, like if you're coming towards the town and you make that right, but it takes you to the four-way stop at Wings Mill and.
That's Wings Mill.
That is, oh, man, that, that is horrible. That move. I'm gonna take my truck on one of them.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, what's the name of the gravel? The top of the fire group. What the heck? Why can't that ever stay dry? I mean, that is so terrible. The very, the Mount Vernon end of the fire group. And by your, by your property. It is always so wet.
Not bad, that, well, then.
Because there must be a spring in there essentially.
Wet ground. You know, you look at the trees and how they don't grow very fast. It's just wet ground. I mean, once you ditch it really deep, but then you gotta keep ditching.
It seems like.
If it's a barrage, it might be an eight-point ditch, you know?
Every year, it seems like the town spends money on a new gravelless and that.
Yeah.
And, you know, I tap my trees over there.
Yeah.
And holy cow, it's for real the whole way. There are muds.
Yeah.
It's like, holy cow. That just be, must be a spring or something.
Well, that's wet ground.
Yeah.
I don't know, but ditch, can't remember. Not much of a ditch.
No, no, it really needs, our roads need ditching. Man. Okay, yeah.
Look, during the conversation of vehicle registration in town, I can't get the town, town office during operations because my wife's a mine dweller.
Yeah.
I utilize Rapid Renewal.
Yeah.
I've had four issues over the years with Rapid Renewal. I've let it slide a couple of times because two of the issues have been transferring vehicles mid-year. The plates come back to both vehicles, but someone's missing a button. I just tried to renew my wife's Jeep again this year. They can't locate it. Call Heather. All I ever get out of her is, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, but she says your vehicle hasn't been registered in a year. I said, well, how's that work? Heather, when I've got a registration, it says it ran out September thirty-first, twenty-four. And I've got stickers on it that are March twenty-four. I don't know, but you haven't registered since twenty-three. So I called the state. My vehicle's registered. So if you have no record of my vehicle being registered, where'd the excise tax for the vehicle go?
We registered it through the Rapid.
Yeah.
So that, that went rates trade, but it didn't come to us.
Doesn't the excise tax come with that?
Yes, yes, it does. It does. She does a download and an upload and the whole deal and all that information from Rapid Renewal gets downloaded into the system into Trio so that we have current information.
How does it do that?
That does it every time you, you should be doing that.
She didn't know to do that last year.
And she called the, DMV after I talked to her and called me back, said it was my mis- it's my mistake. How the hell is it my mistake when I've got a registration that says the vehicle's registered? So now I, and she knew I was pissed last Tuesday.
Yeah.
And I said, fine, so I'm gonna be there registered vehicle. She never mentioned the town office was closed Wednesday, Thursday. So my wife went to work, who works in the OR at the hospital, half hour late to come re- register my vehicle.
Yeah.
And couldn't be done. So now tomorrow, she's going a half hour late again to come register my vehicle because I can't use Rapid Renewal. Since four times over the years on four different vehicles, I've had issues. And all I ever get was, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. I don't know if the training program needs to change or what, but.
What, what's the deal on Rapid Renewal?
Well, I know that it's, it may, it's, I'm sure it's changed since we've done it through, now that it's on the cloud. But what it is, is weekly or bi-weekly, however, the state has got Mount Vernon set up. She's to do an upload of all the motor vehicle registrations that she does here in town that goes right up to the state. And then any rapid renewals that are done for Mount Vernon through the state are downloaded back into Trio so that when somebody comes into the town office that next year to register their vehicle in person, that information is up to date. And it even shows us that it was done by the state, so we know that this gentleman had last year registered it through Rapid Renewal, but he's coming in person because we can see down at the bottom that it was done at the state level. Now he's walking in, but it's an updated because we downloaded through the Rapid Renewal program.
But because it weren't downloaded correctly, I can't use Rapid Renew.
Right, and the MMA will not allow him to do that until his registration gets corrected at the town level.
So how does he do that?
With the dollars and, yeah.
He's got, what he has, what he has to do, and again, because it's in the cloud and it might, the procedures might be a little bit different. But if he brings in that registration that show, which it'll show, his registration is expired on nine-thirty, twenty-twenty-four. It's gonna have his sticker numbers on there. All she's got to do is put that in the system under new to system update and it will put the information in back in the system. I, I, I'm not here to, I'm a day, so I cannot do that to you.
But I mean, this is a repeating issue. Whether the training program needs to change, something needs to change. Because that, and my complaint to part of one, the town went to Rapid Renewal because we started losing the late night on the Saturday.
What, what time is she coming in tomorrow?
She'll be here at seven o'clock. She's supposed to be in the office, lunch stand at seven o'clock.
Yeah, they have.
She'll be here as soon as they open tomorrow.
They're, they're usually here at seven. If I have stuff to do in the morning, they're usually here.
My point is, the town pays for that use of Rapid Renewal, correct?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So why, why is not stuff being done right so our residents can use it?
I don't know. That's what I gotta find out.
Very close. I mean, I've let it slide three times. If someone strikes a button wrong, that's fine, but when she told me it's not registered and I have a registration and that brought me up, okay, so where'd the excise tax by the effort go?
Yeah. I can begin to work. I can't until afternoon though.
And I, I, it's fine, I can call tomorrow too and I can walk through.
Okay. I understand I get to come register. My wife's registered tomorrow, but she knew I was upset and she called me back with a message, but still no word the town was closed. I had no clue town was closed.
Yeah, because of the voting.
That's what I mean. They had a elections conference that was mandatory, but.
I think that's, that's tough, huh? I appreciate that.
My wife's worked in the OR and she did work seven to five.
Yeah, that's.
And I work construction. I'm gonna work four, four-thirty in the morning. Half the summer at midnight, I've been out of work at ten-thirty at night. It was a busy weekend.
I mean, I will begin to. Let me ask a related question. Has the town, I don't know if that's maybe even while I was here, have Saturday hours at all?
We used to.
No.
I mean, we used to have a Saturday, a third Saturday of the month and we used to have one night of the week till seven o'clock.
I mean, that was very helpful. I remember that all the time as well.
And then, and then they stopped it and I made complaints this last minute and we stopped it that some people take down office.
I think we should talk.
With Rapid Renewal.
How would we, how would we at least have a conversation about that?
Problem is, yeah, my wife, they work and she's a lot of minutes to be honest.
Right, okay. We can talk though.
Yeah, it just was highly sad to do that.
Yeah.
Especially when she told me my vehicle wasn't registered.
Yeah. And you just make sure that your wife has that.
Was it Heather or was it Kelly?
It was Heather.
It was Heather.
And I can, I'll call Heather in the morning or send, I'll send her an email tonight so she gets it first thing in the morning.
You guys have another question that I've been trying to get to today and I haven't got it. Who, who decides MSRP?
That's based on, well, the MSRP is based on the state, state regulations that, so there's six mil rates and I can't tell you off the top of my head what they are, but that's mandatory by the state.
Well, no, I, and my question is, I bought it, we can't, but I know what I paid for, I know what the deal she told me MSRP was. And the young lady said that, MR said he's at ninety-two thousand dollars.
It should, no, you have a blue application for title.
Yeah.
I know, because I have a campus too. You have a blue application for title.
There's no fee on, there's no price on.
Oh, there, and that's a dealer issue. Is it drivable?
No. It's just wheel.
Yeah, but still, no, that's a dealer issue. That should be on there. The MSRP should be on there.
Oh, I feel it. I'm going down.
That's a, that's a dealership situation. They need to put that MSRP. She cannot register that vehicle without that MSRP.
See, she just said she got it from the state and I questioned it because.
She can call the state excise tax division and give them what you have, but it's not indicative of your VIN number. So it, it, it's not probably accurate.
I'll look into it. Well, then, thank you.
But that's, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. That's standard.
Anything else?
Let's see if they have some good answers for him too.
Yeah, I'll check on it too. Okay. Yep. But we're here.
I can set up the second, sorry.
Dan, Saturday hours shut them down because she wasn't getting anybody. Also shut down, um, late one evening.
Yeah, I think it was.
Because she wasn't getting anybody. So. We talked to her.
I'm gonna stop then. I'm gonna stop then. I haven't seen her in a while.
Hey, you never see you.
Thanks.